You're listening to W K D W radio 97.5 FM and KDWRadio.com broadcasting from the Bishop West real estate mobile tower right here in sunny Northport, Florida. We have got some great, great, great weather coming into town for the Super Bowl. So everybody enjoy the weekend. This is fun Friday and fun Friday today just happens to be Joseph Garen day. And I go ahead and introduce yourself, Joseph, and let everybody in Northport know who you are.
My name is Joseph Garen. I'm running for the city commissioner seat for district one in Northport in the special election that's going to be held on March 9th. I am formerly a Chicagoland area resident that moved down here about a year and a half ago to Florida. Me and my wife have looked at this area because of family that's lived down here for the last, at least the last decade, but just to be closer to them. So when I saw that the opportunity came up that David Ianati had resigned from the position, it opened up an opportunity for me to put my hat into the, into the circus called politics.
So let's, let's step back out, out into some personal realm first. Give us some insight about who you are.
I, like I said, been a Chicagoland area resident my entire life. I love sports. I love a lot of different things. Professionally, I've been a quality engineer for the last six years about, and the company that I've worked for worked on projects for SpaceX and Boeing, working on their aerospace project, sending rockets up to the International Space Station. It's a fun little thing to work on when you sit there and think about it because you're helping provide services to the people that are sitting on the International Space Station on a regular basis. And just to know where we've gone in the world of aerospace and space exploration in general over the last five, 10 years is amazing. Now you got companies that are talking about sending people out to Mars by 2025. So it's a fun thing.
Lot going on in space, isn't there?
Yeah, a lot of stuff going on in space.
I think there's probably more going on in space than we know about.
You would like to believe that because that's in a, in a way go sci-fi over here, but that's, people have talked about going to space and exploring and seeing what the possibilities are out there for over 50 years, 60 years, you know, people have always looked to the unknown to sit there and see where the future might bring us.
So with your work background, where, how do you figure that fits in being newer to our area? Which I, I think it's cool that you're running because I think people have to, to get, get their feet wet somehow. With your work background, how do you figure that fits into, to politics and, and livelihood here for you?
Well, just with the background of what I've worked in, you sit there and you look at continuous improvement in the quality field all the time and looking at an aspect of quality improvement and consistent improvement, you can sit there and apply that same thing to politics within the city. We want to make sure that we're cost effective. We want to make sure that we're not being wasteful. We want to make sure that we're doing the things that are best for the city. And you can put those same applications in from quality into government. And I think that bringing a fresh perspective into politics is a great way to be able to start off.
And I like your explanation. Jim Bateman says, welcome to the area. And any questions that you guys have during the show on Facebook and W K D W radio 97.5 FM, feel free to ask the questions. They're going to pop up and things are definitely going to hopefully get interesting as we continue to talk. But so what inspired you being new in, in Northport to run?
Well, I've seen how bad politics and bad fiscal management have ruined what is a beautiful city of Chicago. You see it on a regular basis out over there where the politicians don't necessarily do what's best for the citizens and they just worry about what they want for themselves. And the problem is, is you do see on a regular basis, every year annually, Illinois is losing more residents out of state because of increased taxes, mismanagement with the government. We had a period of, I believe it was three out of four consecutive years where we did not have a budget passed within the state. That doesn't do any good for the citizens. It actually hurts the citizens when you don't know what's going on with your state and your city. And you need to sit there and put past those kinds of things to sit there and get things done. You've got to be able to negotiate. You got to be able to work one side to the other side. And when you get one sidedness, there's no good outcome.
So, you know, going, going through your background and, and being involved in the, the different aspects of what you've done, do you feel like you have an, I don't want to say an advantage because I don't think anybody has an advantage going into politics. But do you feel, feel like you have a comfort level for dealing with different levels of, of the, the industry?
Not necessarily better than one person or another. I just look at things in a different way, just from the quality aspect. I have to look at different things. I have to look at requirements. I have to look at requirements from one standard to another standard from the customer's viewpoint, from our viewpoint as the provider that we have to sit there and accommodate all these things into one to sit there and get something through. And if you don't, you end up losing out on contracts, which ends up losing out on money. And like I said, that's the same kind of thing that you see within politics. If it's mismanaged and you're losing money, there's no good benefit for the people of the city when you're sitting there throwing money around that's not benefiting anybody. I think you really should have like a good plan when you're going through any kind of a project. When you start off, is this project going to be manageable? Are we going to lose money? Are we going to profit money? You might not make money the very first year, two years, or three years down the road. But if you're showing that you're going to be able to make a profit on something that generates revenue for the city in a couple years, because your first couple of years of doing any kind of a big project, you might lose money on it because of the infrastructure that you have to put in place, whether in the quality and manufacturing world, you might have to buy new machines. You might have to implement different procedures and policies and manpower and things like that. But over the course of time, you should always see a reward. You shouldn't be seeing negative losses every year on projects.
So I'm going to ask you this because it's a, it's a different, definitely a different way of looking at it. But is this a business point of view dealing with politics?
In a way it is. It's, you know, you're looking at it. You've got to look at it from a financial standpoint because a lot of the people within the city that you talk to are furious about the way that the money is being managed within the city. And they feel that people aren't looking at things in a manner that's going to provide a benefit to the city. You talk about different things as we're going around. You got the aquatic center that people are, people are frankly mad about it because you went ahead as a city and you brought in this aquatic center and people are finding out that it's losing money annually. Where was the benefit of that? You know, people are, like I said, people are mad. You know, you want to sit there and do what's right for the city. And that's definitely not by blowing millions of taxpayers of dollars on projects that aren't going to show any kind of reward.
Well, and I, I will say that it's tough to show a reward on a project that had a pandemic start out with their goal.
It is. And that is a big issue. You're talking about a pandemic that basically shut down people going out and enjoying themselves. So you're looking at a year where you're losing money on an endeavor that we can't even attempt to try to figure out where we will be in the future until we actually get it up and running at full speed. Just, just with the amount of revenue from admission going into the place, you didn't see that this year because you don't know how many people would have come if there wasn't for the pandemic. Pandemic hit a lot of people real hard. You've got the small business owners. You got restaurants and things like that that suffered and a lot of people laid off because of it.
Right. Let's, uh, let's pop a couple of those questions back up on the screen and I'll read those. How familiar are you with the unified land development code, in particular to the rezoning of the estates from, from agricultural to the residential estates? Where are you at on that?
The unified land development code is just a way to make sure that everything is followed within the city on a set of guidelines. If we have to go through and rezone different areas to make it accommodating for other things, then that's something that the commission would end up having to look at. What it comes down to, to me is what is best for the city. If you want to sit there and bring in a sense of agricultural development within the estates, you got to get an opinion based off of what the people that are already currently living there want within that zone.
Chris Hanks had a question. Can you bring that up, Marie? Are you reading that one all right?
Would you support the push of Toledo Blade Boulevard to Highway 72 is a four mile stretch that would soften the burden of traffic, expand the transport grid, but must go through the Carlton Reserve? Would you support taking the four mile stretch of Toledo Blade to Highway 72 and Clark Boulevard? Again, we're talking about, you got people that are living in these areas that are affected by the traffic. So if there's a way to do it and still be mindful of the environment that's around over there, that's all developed in the planning areas. And in order to sit there and make a decision based off of that, you would have to see what they're planning on doing. Is it going to be mindful of the area? Are they just talking about tearing it down and putting it through and not taking in regard to what people are talking about in that area? Ideally, it does sound like it'd be a good idea to minimize the amount, or you know, open up the traffic so people aren't so congested. But at the same time, you also have to look at those other aspects as well.
Don't, do you think that that will open up the corridor of Toledo Blade a lot better if that did go through?
I do believe it would. You know, Toledo Blade is a, one of the two major exits coming off the expressway that a lot of people travel on, on a daily basis between that and Sumter. Those are the only two real access points to getting into Northport from I-75. So if you're able to sit there and minimize any kind of traffic and allow people to move smoothly through the city, it does sound on paper that it would be a benefit.
But go ahead with this next question. What is your position on the expansion of water and sewer in the city?
That is a big topic of conversation within the city. I myself am worried about what the financial burden is going to be on the citizens if something like that does go through. The Senate did pass, the House or the Senate of Florida ended up passing Senate Bill 712, which delegates the Clean Water Act to the Department of Environmental Protection. That is going to end up causing some concern right now. As far as I know, from what everything I've read is that it's not mandatory, but they can sit there and try to make it mandatory. Part of the problem is, is if we do not get out in front of it, we can't be considered shovel ready to be able to get any additional funding. And then the entire amount of the 27,000, which is an estimate on the high side right now for the cost would be strictly on that of the taxpayers' houses. And there's talks about how to minimize that. But overall, I'm worried about this is the citizens out here that are stuck on a fixed income and a low income source of revenue that are you going to be able to sit there and cost them an extra $100 a month when they don't have that disposable income coming in. So it's something that I'm looking into. I've actually talked to the utilities department and they sent me a bunch of links concerning it that I am still going over. But my biggest concern is what's going to happen when this does come through and people have to toss out an extra $100 plus a month on their property taxes.
So I'm going to ask this because there, there's no way that, that, thanks Pete, I appreciate that. Um, there's no way that we're going to have this like a fell swoop come in and, and take over the city. Can you give some direction on that of, of the insight that you have right now?
What I have heard is they want to focus on areas that's already been developed up over 60% of the area. There's been talks about whether or not we should go ahead and focus on older homes as opposed to newer homes because the concern that the septic systems contribute to red tide and other algae problems within the state of Florida. And we all know what has happened with red tide and how it's affected the economy here in Southwest Florida particularly. There are plenty of restaurants that I used to go to when I'd come down here and visit that aren't even open anymore that had great food. And part of that was because the lack of tourism from the people not coming down here because you couldn't enjoy everything out at the local beaches. So with those aspects, you got planning about going, making it over 30 years, being put onto your property taxes. So it's not a one lump sum. If you want to be able to put it all up and pay the $27,000, they're talking about allowing people to do that. I spoke with one person that would like to see if we're not going to focus on that area particularly right now, if we can start paying into it now. So when it finally does get into that area, we can sit there and have basically a large deposit of it already paid for. There's a lot of things that they're talking about to try to lower the cost for the citizens. And again, until you get to pass the design stage and more stages pass that to be considered shovel ready, there's no fine line saying this is exactly what it's going to cost. And that's my concern is nobody knows what the final cost is going to be. So how can somebody sit there and say, yeah, you know what, I'm all for this when you have a society in here in Northport that relies on such a short fixed income, low income with the food services in the retail industry. It wouldn't be responsible to decide on that without knowing everything upfront.
So you've got, you've got a lot of things that you're, you're looking at. And I'm going to take a different approach to the, the water and sewer side of it because I agree with what you said. But I also agree with the flip side of that. There are a lot of, there are a lot of situations that people are supposed to be paying their, their water and sewer to themselves and maintaining their septic and their well systems. And you pay your water bill to yourself instead of paying it to the city. And I teach that as I sell properties, but at the end of the day, aren't we built on top of our drinking water?
We are built on top of our drinking water in the fact that we are well and septic. You're getting your water out of the ground. You're built right over it. With the septic, if the septic does go bad, now you're going to sit there and contaminate the drinking water that you're having because it's going back down into the ground. And that is one of the other concerns that people have brought up about it. And when I talked to the utilities department about it, they were even talking about possibly with the newer homes and people that have the newer septic systems that you don't have to worry about the septic system really going bad anytime soon, whether or not that can get put off for those people or even given some form of a discount if they switch over to the city sewer and city water. Because it is such a new thing and septic systems aren't the same way that they were, you know, 40, 50 years ago. They're a lot more durable and a lot more manageable for the environment than what they were.
Well, do you think that there's something we could do preemptively during the switch over? I do actually, but I will let you run with this. Do you think there's something that we can do maybe within the Department of Health or within our own permitting department to maybe do a recertification every five years with a pump out?
That would be a great idea. If you sit there and can prove that your septic system is working properly and there's no issues with it, why not have some kind of an incentive to have this done on a somewhat of a regular basis to sit there and make sure that you're not contributing to the environmental causes of algae and red tide and things like that. There's no reason why you shouldn't be able to do that. That might even be able to help prevent people from having the mandatorily hookup if you're able to get that passed.
Well, and, and it does two things. First off, it improves the, the quality of septic tanks within the city. Because now we've got document, documentation from a certified septic company who's coming in to check those and, and pumping them out and recertifying those. And on top of that, we, we can kind of govern those a lot differently than we have in the past because a lot of people don't know that they're really not allowed to do their own repairs on septic tanks. They have to be done by a professional and most repairs can't be done. That's a replacement. I've, I've had my fair share of conversations about this as a real estate agent, and I'm sure you're going to get hit with both sides of this as you go through. That's why I wanted to kind of point this out that, you know, to every, every decision, there's two sides to every, every decision you make.
Everything. There, there really is. There's two sides to everything that you're looking at. And that's the whole thing is you got to try finding the happy medium on it. You can't sit there and go one extreme or the other extreme. You have to find out where people can come to that common ground and make an agreement on it. So this way it's beneficial for all involved.
Well, and I just saw something pop up on the screen. Grandfather Clause and Waivers. William English, he's a proficient listener of my show. I appreciate you, William. Grandfather Clause and Waivers.
Well, the grandfather clauses would be basically anybody that's got the older septic systems and that's where the concerns end up coming in. But as we were just talking about, if you're able to sit there and get some kind of a program put in where you have a, whether we go through the Department of Environmental Protections to get certified to say that these septic systems are safe and there's no problems with them, then you can see about getting a waiver. And that makes sense, but to just grandfather everybody in, you would have to make sure that they are abiding by those exact same clauses in the, the Department of Environmental Protections to make sure that the septic systems are working properly. Because if you don't and you're leaking out and you're causing contamination and basically turning your front yard into a septic system where, you know, you're going to sit over there and cause more damage. So make sure that you're sitting over there keeping up on what you need to for your house.
Well, and, and that's the, the first side of what I brought up, which was you're paying your own maintenance anyway. And, and really the pump out, it should be done every four or five years to begin with. And that really, it's a, it's a great thing for a septic tank to be pumped out because you're getting rid of a lot of the things that cause the damage to the tank to begin with. So, and as, as long as we're providing the maintenance that homeowners should be retaking responsibility for. The well, not so much. If you're willing to drink bad water and you're not keeping up on your well system, shame on you. But the septic tank, we all have to live with the damage that's caused by this. And even with our, our sister county down south, Charlotte County, they're stepping their game up. It's, it, this is not a city of Northport thing. This is a Florida across the board, addressing by every city and county out there. Do you want to expand on that?
Well, that's what I was talking about, the Senate Bill 712. With that Senate Bill being passed, it's not a matter of when it's, or it's, it's a matter of when it's going to actually happen. You know, we can try to do what we can to get out in front of it to make sure that we're ready and make sure that we're able to implement it as soon as that, as soon as they make it mandatory. But you have to get through the steps to get to that point. So this way you're not costing the taxpayers even more money by delaying it. Like I said, right now, we're talking about it's estimated $27,000 to sit there and do this per house. And if you're looking at $27,000 per house, but you can sit there and get federal grants and money from outside sources to bring that down, that's a benefit to the people because it will eventually come down as being mandatory as the states already passed the Senate Bill for the Clean Water Act.
So I'm going to ask you a question that I've asked a lot of people who've run in, in our town. And, and it's, it's probably not a traditional question. It's, it's a little different. Your, your one voice of possibly five, what, what makes, what makes you stand out as, as an individual leader in that one of five, when it comes to a topic that you may care about along the way? And, and also are, are you adaptable to others' inner conversation changes?
Well, that's what I kind of mentioned earlier. You got to be able to sit there and be willing to negotiate and come to a middle ground. You know, you can't sit there and be so hard headed that you want to sit there and focus on only what you want to achieve. And that's part of what I seen up in Chicago. The politicians up over there wanted what they wanted and didn't care about what other people wanted. You have to have your ears open to listen to all sides, every direction. If you're not willing to sit there and do that, you're getting into the wrong area of, of politics. You know, you got to sit there and represent what the people want. You got to represent what the city wants. You got to represent what the state wants. You got to represent everybody as a politician. And some people don't try to look at it that way. So from my perspective, I like to sit there and get all points of views from it. I like to get the facts in front of me before making decisions. I want to sit there and take into consideration what this group of people say, what this group of people say, and try to come up to a decision based off of everything that's available.
From being new in our town, what are, what are a couple of things that stand out to you that are special? And what are a couple of things that you would like to see improve?
Some of the things that I think stand out as being special is our natural environment out here that we do have, you know, we are growing. We're seeing a two to 3% increase in population every year for the last at least six years that I looked up. And when you see that, you've got to sit there and take into consideration what people are going to need, not just now, but also in the future. Right now, there was an article, I believe it was two days ago in the Northport Sun or the Herald, in which they had mentioned that we've got over 20, 28,000 people as a workforce here in Northport, but we only have 9,000 jobs. You know, we got to sit there and focus on trying to work with businesses to be able to bring those businesses in. You know, I can't sit there and go out now and say, hey, I want you to come out here. We have to make it accommodating for them, but at the same time, being mindful of our environment and making sure that they're willing to sit there and do what they can as a company and as a developer to sit there and help keep Northport the way Northport has been without turning it into a big giant concrete jungle. We've got enough of that. We've got, you know, Sarasota straight down the highway. You get into downtown Sarasota and you got tall buildings, steel and concrete. And a lot of people didn't move down here for that. You have big cities for that. Northport is one of the largest cities within the state of Florida, and we have this nice hometown feel to it without having to sit there and turn it into something that people didn't want.
Well, and, and I like the, I like the addressing of the, the difference between Northport and Sarasota. I, I don't think we're ever, and I, I'm going to say this because I just don't think we're ever going to be that. I, I think the, the world is changing and I think the, the time of of big buildings being built with this pandemic, I think it's changed a whole lot of direction of, of where people work today, how they work today, working remote now. It's, it's really amped up, I think maybe 15 years faster than what any of us saw coming because all these, all these companies that are out there that are addressing needs now, they're addressing them totally different than what we've done before. And you, you probably have experienced that yourself.
I actually talked to somebody the other day because they are concerned about whether or not, you know, developers coming in and they want to sit there and build and they're worried about tearing all the trees down. But I've talked to some people and that's not what's happening. You do have some developers specifically at Wellon Park that are doing what they can to sit there and make and replant areas and do what they can. They were moving a bunch of big giant oak trees from where their property is to another location so that the trees stay within the city. And it's that kind of mindful development that I would really love to be able to work with. You know, you're doing what you can to keep Northport, Northport while at the same time helping with the economic growth within the city.
How do you stop progress and continue growth?
You can't really stop progress and continue growth, but what you can do is work to make it less painful where you see things happening. You know, if you're going to sit there, you got to have progress. And in order to have the progress, you have to be willing to sit there and make some changes here and there. But whether or not you sit there and just say, we're going to develop all this land out, that's not, that's not right. We have other ways to sit there and be able to generate revenue within the city and make it grow economically. One of the things that I talked about is ecotourism and tourism in general. We have the Maia River. We have the warm mineral springs. We have natural resources like that. That can be a great source of revenue for the city of Northport. If it's implemented and promoted properly, there's no reason that we can't see revenue generated without having to destroy areas. Some of the other things I've talked to with other people is we have buildings where there's nothing going on in it. Why not, instead of having to, you know, tear down a bunch of area to sit there and build up new buildings, why don't we work with people that own that property and say, you know, hey, let's restructure this and make it more appealing to the city of Northport. So this way customers will sit there and, or not customers, but businesses will come in and generate customers that will help bring in a new source of revenue on properties that don't have anything going on in it.
Do you feel like that a lot of the builders that are here now, at the, at the rate we're going with, with build outs, do you think they're keeping a mindful set?
Some are. I, I'm not sure about all of them because I don't talk to all of them. I know that
That's an impossible task, by the way.
There's so many developers out over here, but what you can do is work within the unified land development code and make it so this way, when they are developing and when they are building, here's what's required. This is what we're looking for and things like that. We do work with exemptions on properties. So when you look at the different properties, look to see what they want to do, see if there's exemptions that we're willing to concede to bring the companies in here, and also work with the residents within the city, if that's something that they feel that they want in their areas. You know, we're talking about it the other night. I was talking to somebody about it on Facebook and you had the 7-Eleven issue. And you had the seven 11 issue over at, I believe it's Cranberry and Price where they wanted to put a 24 hour seven 11 with a gas station. And the property was zoned out commercial and hey, there you go. It's a commercial property, but it wasn't zoned to hold a 24 hour gas station and a car wash with a big giant sign that was impeding on the residents there. They didn't want it. They spoke their mind. They looked at the code. Or they looked at the zoning requirements of it and said, hey, this isn't what it's actually meant to be. So no, we're not going to okay this.
Well, and, and those types of things matter. Uh, it matters to a community and it matters how, how we build out our community. Uh, how do you see Northport in, in five years from now? Uh, you know, you're, you're, you've got a, a brief window of opportunity here to, to, to look at things because we're booming. It's, we're, we're not slowing down, even though we've got a lot of craziness happening in this world. Growth is not a problem right now, but in a sense, but go ahead.
But you're right. We're, we're growing so fast on a residential standpoint. We have people moving down here and that's one of the reasons I want to see jobs flourish down here in Florida. You know, not going back to the retail and the food service industries. We've got a lot of that out here. What we need to see is, uh, medical, we need to see tech, we need to see manufacturing. We need to see jobs like that, that can sit there and provide a, a livelihood for the residents out here without having to travel an hour away. And I would love to be able to see that happen while being a commissioner. It'd be a great. It'd be great for the city to be able to get that kind of a revenue from these businesses coming in. Help provide for taxes that we can use on other projects within the city. Without having to sit there and rely on the shoulders of the taxpayers that are already down here and the residents that are already paying taxes. Nobody wants to see their property taxes go up. Nobody wants to. So how do you do that? You gotta be able to bring in other forms of revenue and how can you do that? Bring in tourism, bring in corporations that are willing to do business within it. And have a workforce. If you're living in the city of Northport and you're working within the city of Northport and you have the amenities within the city of Northport that you can sit there and do things as a family, as an individual and spend your money within the city of Northport. It's all a benefit for the city of Northport as long as you sit there and do it mindfully. So this way you're not impeding on everything that holds Northport in the hearts of the people that live here.
So I'm, I'm not going to point fingers because I don't think anybody's to blame. Um, except, you know, just timing of, of, of commercial side. Um, everybody wants to hold commissioners accountable for what's coming into our town. Uh, you're, you're a potential, uh, commissioner and you're going, you're going through this vote, this special election. Kind of explain to people what the difference is between the commercial side and the residential side and how that affects the, the, the tax base.
Okay. Currently we're sitting over eighty percent residential where that means most of the city's revenues coming off of the taxpayers. When you sit there and get a balance between the residence and the business, the businesses are going to end up paying more taxes overall than what the residents are going to sit there and pay individually. So having a corporation come on in or another business that comes in and has the taxes that they're paying based off the property that they're on, plus you also have the residents that are going to be working at these corporations as well. All generates revenue for the city. And if you can sit there and get to a point where this revenue is generating enough money, you don't have to see the taxpayers of the residents, the property taxes and things like that go up. We don't need to see that when you have plenty of opportunities to sit there and grow economically through other means.
So where should our number be? Where, where would be a sweet spot for us, do you think? Uh, because eighty percent's really high.
Eighty percent residential is really high. If we can get probably seventy, seventy-five percent residential compared to, uh, business, that would, that would do a lot for the city and we can just sit there and see where we go as we progress.
So dictating how we do this, and I take the word dictating out of there. Because I, I understand a hundred percent that you guys in the, in the commission area. Yes, while you are helpful in bringing businesses in, businesses decide whether they're coming here based on rooftops. And, and we've been saying it for a long time. I've been here 20 plus years. We now have the rooftops to support a lot of eyes on the ground right now from a lot of different corporations. The problem is we also have COVID who's making everybody step back and go, how are we going to readdress what we're doing today? If this would have happened five years ago, continued like it was seven, eight, 10 years ago. Our whole city would be looking different right now. But the businesses now are going to be addressing their need. We may see smaller buildings. We, we may see smaller targets of, of the world instead of super centers. We may see them spread out differently than we've ever had before. I think we're seeing that with like the Port Charlotte Mall, uh, that's kind of disappearing right in front of all of our eyes. And, and we're seeing super malls like we have in Sarasota that we're all going to have to drive to if we want to walk through those malls. Things are changing. Where do you see Northport fitting in strategically? Uh, in, in the next five years, trying to get that mix here?
Well, that's what I was talking about with in regards to trying to bring medical facilities out here, tech facilities, not focusing on the retail industry. If you can sit there and bring in manufacturing where you don't have to worry about going out shopping at say the mall. And Charlotte Mall was a beautiful mall, uh, been going there for the better part of six and a half years when I was of a snowbird, uh, coming down here. And when I first started coming down here, the mall usually was packed. You always had people over there. And within the last couple of years, specifically this year because of COVID, the only time that you walked in there was Christmas time when it was packed. Uh, it's, it's sad to see, but that's the state of affairs thanks to a pandemic that's going on. And you know, manufacturing and hospitals and tech jobs are still going and still making money and still generating where, you know, retail and food services have struggled because of the pandemic. You know, we can sit there and get these kinds of companies to come within the city. It's going to be a constant flow of income within the city to generate revenue.
We had a question pop up. There it is right there. Go ahead and read that off there.
What is your opinion of an east end community center? And if you support, would you be willing to support and encourage a mixed P3 development for that center by blending an entertainment corridor for the funding of that center through that P3? Actually, it'd be nice to sit there and have a P3 workout, some entertainment sections of Northport. Cause even with entertainment, we were sitting there talking about that a little bit ago where ultimately you want people to sit there and have everything within the city. So this way they can sit there and feel that they don't have to go out of town to sit there and spend their money on anything. Right now we really don't have that big of an entertainment industry. We don't have, we, we've got a little arts district within the city, but you want arts, you're going to say Sarasota to sit there and take in their art activities. We don't have an art district per se where an entertainment district where people can go and spend the day, go to, go to entertain themselves, you know, it's, we have to go outside of the city to enjoy these kinds of activities. And people don't want to have to drive an hour away to sit there and do that. So let's work with companies, private entities, public interests, whoever that we can to sit there and get funding to sit there and bring things into the city that people want. You know, it's, if it, if it's financially feasible to show that we're going to sit there and make money off of it, why not look into it? The worst that happens when you're looking into it is you're going to find out whether or not it's a benefit or it's not a benefit. Are you going to make money? Are you not going to make money? Is the city going to make revenue? Are we going to lose revenue? You gotta be able to sit there and look at every aspect of it to sit there and determine whether or not it's going to be a good idea for the city.
Well, and I, I, I think that the entertainment district, uh, you know, that's been a, a, a topic of conversation, I think now for at least 12 to 14 years. And, and Peter, if you're listening, uh, please tell me if I'm wrong because I remember that envision Northport. And, and that was a, a huge passion that he had. Um, and, and really there's probably fifty or sixty percent of Northport who are game for listening to everything to, to talk about an entertainment district. Uh, because we're a young community and you know, eighty percent of us drive away to go to work. Uh, and we talked a little bit about that. I mean, you can go have lunch here in Northport and sit down at, at any restaurant in Northport and not wait in line. Uh, because there, the workers aren't here. They're, they're gone. They're, they're independent guys. They're doing their thing. They're hardworking. They're blue collar. Uh, everything that they're about is, is, uh, live in the grind. Okay.
The one, when you're driving an hour away, you know, an hour to me isn't bad because I'm from the Chicagoland area where it took you two hours to get to work every day. But you know, when you're sitting there looking at having to go out of city, an hour down the expressway, that's a lot of wear and tear on your car. That's a lot of, you know, a lot of gas that you're spending to sit there and commute to work every day. So yeah, you know, bring the things into the city that make a city, a city. So this way the people can sit there and enjoy living within their city. And living within your city doesn't just mean having a, a bed and a roof over your head. It means being able to enjoy life within your city and be proud of what your city represents to you and the rest of the community.
And, and, and that's true. I, you know, we're, I, I hang out with a group of people and I, I promise you, I promise you, we drive away every weekend, uh, for entertainment and sometimes, uh, through the week. Uh, only because we don't have, we have, we have really good restaurant owners here, really good, extremely supportive. Over the top supportive with local baseball, a high school, the middle schools. In fact, I, I would, I would say that based on our community overall, our restaurant owners, our small business owners that are out there, they're, they are extremely given. Um, I'm not picking on anybody when I say that because I love my community. I love the restaurants that are here and I frequent them too. I'm just saying when it comes to the value of, of entertainment that we were talking about. This matters to, to, to live music. It's the, it's the ambiance that comes with that. It's, it's the dancing. It's the, it's just the involvement of relaxation.
Yes. And, and you were just talking about the restaurant owners, the restaurant owners, when you have an entertainment district that people are coming to, the, the food service industry will sit there and prosper from that as well, because you're bringing in people that's going to these restaurants as they're going to go out and have a night out on the town, go out and entertain themselves. So entertainment districts do work, but again, you have to make sure that it's the things that people want to see within the city. You gotta make sure that it's fiscally responsible to sit there and get involved in something like that. Cause we don't want, we don't want a well of money being just thrown, money being thrown into a well that's, you're never going to see come back out again. You want to sit there and see prosper.
Well, and, and you talked a little bit about the, the direct connect to the, the restaurants and different things like that. Put that in combination with hotels. Uh, we've got a new hotel here, but having an entertainment district is, would change the, the flow of business for them too.
Well, you had mentioned like having, uh, music venues and things like that, having outdoor music. Uh, people coming on in, depending on how big of a venue that you're talking about, you see big bands come in. People actually come out of town to see bands and then where are they going to stay? They're going to stay at a hotel. That's going to generate revenue as well. But like I said, it all depends on what you want to sit there and do as a city and what we're willing to bring in. We have to sit there and work with what the residents want to see within the city as well. Cause if you do things that the citizens don't want, you're going to sit there and be up, uh, you're going to be facing an uphill battle the entire time.
Do, and I'm going to ask this too, because, uh, it, I'm not a fan of it, but I know it happens. Um, squeaky wheel gets the grease a lot of times. You have a small, uh,
It's actually a phrase that a lady that I work with used to say all the time, the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Right. How, how, how are you going to address that? Because I, I love the fact that we have people who want to disagree. I, I, I love the fact that we have people who want to at least conversate with each other versus uh, what's happening in, in today's world, which is, uh, culture cancellation. Uh, and, and if you don't agree with me, get away. Uh, how are you going to deal with that? Cause I know it's happening today.
Yes, it is happening and you see it all the time. If you don't agree with somebody, they're wanting to cancel you out, not give you a voice. And to me that, that defeats the purpose. You should be open to conversation. And if you're not willing to be open to conversation, that's not anything against the other person. That's saying a lot about you as an individual that you're not willing to sit there and take in other points of view. So, uh, in regards to cancel culture, I'm, I'm definitely not for it. I like to sit there and try to hear everybody's point of view. And we really should sit there and, you know, if we have to send polls out to the neighborhoods where things are going to be affected. You know, online polls, real easy, get, get a voice from, within the community of what they feel that they want. You see it on Microsoft's website, MSN's homepage. Every day they have polls that they sit there and list. It's not that hard to get an opinion. And getting an opinion is what really matters to a lot of these people in the city because they want a voice. They want to be able to know that what they want within their city is, um, you know, being thought of and not just being disregarded.
So being a candidate in this runoff and, and a potential commissioner. How are you inspiring people to get involved with your, with your candidacy? Um, and, and then also keeping them involved whether you win or lose.
Well, with my campaign, I've been going door to door, introducing myself, handing out a card, talking to people, getting their opinion. I've got a Facebook page put up where people can sit there and reach out to me. People's, on that Facebook page has my phone number. People can call me. And you know, a lot of people don't really sit there and throw their personal information out like that for you to sit there and call anytime. You know, if I don't answer my phone, I'll see the voicemail. I'll call you back. I had somebody today sit there and called me and I called him back and left a voicemail back for them. Uh, you gotta be open. You gotta be sitting there willing to, willing to make that extra effort. You know, you can't just sit there and, you know, hide out and not do what you need to do to reach out to people. And, uh, you really have to put forth that effort. If you're not willing to put out that effort, people aren't going to sit there and know anything about you. You're not going to get anything done that you want to try to get done to try to make the city a better place. And the only way you're going to do that is by getting the opinions of the people that you're meeting every day.
So in order for them to learn more about you, other than this show, do you have an event coming up that they could come to?
An event that, that's something that I've been talking to a couple of people about, about hosting an event somewhere. Uh, for everybody to just come on out and meet up. Uh, there is a, there's going to be a fundraiser next week on the eighth at the Old World Restaurant that uh, people have been promoting, but I've also talked to people about just like going somewhere and posting a, posting something about meeting somewhere. I'll be out at this area. Come meet the candidate type scenarios. Uh, so there are ways to sit there and go about it and we'll see what happens. I sit there, I post articles as you're scrolling over there about the newspaper article where people can sit there and find more information about me. I've done a couple of interviews with, uh, another radio station in town. Uh, being engaged within the community and making sure people can sit there and be uh, easily to communicate with is a one thing that you can sit there and do. And if you're, like I said, if you're not willing to communicate to people, people aren't going to sit there and be able to get an idea of what you represent, what you're for and things like that.
So when you're, when you're, um, going through this process for the first time, first time.
Yes, first time.
I, I, and I didn't ask you, I didn't ask you any questions before this, but I'm assuming it was your first time. So I'm glad I'm right there. Um, you know, going through this the first time, what have you learned?
I have learned it's crazy and hectic. There's not enough time in the day to do everything that you want to do. There's, you know, like we were just talking about it, being able to sit there and reach as many people as you can. While you're trying to campaign to sit there and let people know who you are and what you're representing and what you want to see happen for the city. It seems like an impossible task. It, it's just so grand in scale, even just on the city level that it, it, it's really hectic and crazy. I, I, I didn't expect it to be as crazy as it is, but at the same time I welcome it. I welcome talking to people. I, I enjoy having conversations. I like that kind of aspect when it comes down to the politics. What I don't like is the dirty side of politics and it was brought to my attention Wednesday as I was preparing for the, uh, Northport Area Chamber of Commerce that some, uh, entity decided to send out a flyer bashing Alice White. And that's not me. I don't try to do anything like that. I want to keep politics clean. We've done this for four years in the media where it was bashing politicians left and right. You still see it today. Haven't we had enough of bashing people? Just stay away from bashing and just stick to what it is. If, if people have questions about it and want to reach out to me, they can reach out to me about it. Just know that, you know, the things that got sent out in a mailer is not from me. I don't agree with that kind of thing. And I like to sit there and try to keep things on a friendly and cordial basis when you're out doing it. There's no reason for negative attacks.
And, and you know, I've, I've interviewed Alice White and, and I, I'll say this to, to. And, and you know, I've, I've interviewed Alice White and, and I, I'll say this to, because you brought her in, uh, she feels the same way you do.
To me, that's the way it's supposed to be. How are you gonna sit there and be able to work with somebody within the community like Alice White that has the People for Trees, uh, nonprofit? That sits there and does things within the community, but sit there and, you know, send something out on a personal level and attack her. Like I said, that wasn't from me, I don't promote any of that stuff, even on my Facebook page, I didn't even bother sharing it. I ended up finding out first through somebody on Facebook that sent me pictures of the flyer and I had to tell them that's, that's not mine. I don't know where it came from, uh, after asking to highlight the bottom of the thing, it came from someplace in Tallahassee, Florida. You know, it's, it, it's sad that politics has come to that where people feel the need to have to go out and attack on a regular basis, whatever they are against, but let's try to keep it civil.
Do you think that all starts at the local level?
At the local level, I don't think it should start out at the local level, you know, we are all part of the same community. You know, having something like that where it's negative right here in your city isn't right. You know, we are all part of the same city, we are all, chances are, we're gonna see each other out on the street. Why do you want that animosity towards somebody?
Right, I, well, I think civility has to start local.
Civility has to start. When you're being raised, when you're growing up as a child, you should have civility taught to you, you should be able to sit there and understand people and not just look at them in a negative light just because of some views that they have. Everybody's entitled to their own views. And, uh, like I said, to me that, uh, I wasn't happy about finding out that there were personal attacks in that is that just puts me in a bad light in the end because people that may support me say, oh, look at you, you're going to dirty politics to try to win an election and it's not even from me. Disclaimers at the bottom of the page show that it's from somebody else and it, it's ridiculous that people go that route.
Nobody even gets to the bottom of the page.
You, you aren't lying and it even goes with newspaper articles, people read the headline and you see it on social media, ooh, here's the headline, click, share without even reading the entire article.
Right, well, we are done with this show, you have talked now for fifty-three minutes.
It's amazing how quick an interview goes.
Uh, it, it didn't take any time, but I, 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 uh, I hope you enjoyed yourself, that's the first time you've been on my show, it's,
Thank you for having me.
Very enjoyable to talk to you and I wish you well. And, uh, Tuesday night at Old World, starting at what time?
Oh, I'd actually have to look at it, I think it's six or seven o'clock, I'd have to look at the information.
Old World and, and ask, uh, or check out your Facebook page, which is.
Uh, facebook.com forward slash Joseph dot Garen seven six.
And if you just type in Joe, Joseph Garen, Northport, it's gonna pop up. So, uh, thank you guys for listening on WKDW Radio ninety-seven point five FM and also on Facebook and good luck to you.